I'd like to call to order February 10th Upper Gwinnett Township Business Meeting to Order. Please stand for the pledge.
In honor of the Philadelphia Eagles, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes. I'm on cloud nine, so bear with me. Deanna, could you do the roll call, please?
Catherine Carter, President.
Here.
Rebecca Moody, Vice President.
Here.
Denise Hall, Commissioner.
Here.
Liz McNaney, Commissioner.
Here.
Gregory Mall, Commissioner.
Here.
Andrea Zedell, Township Manager.
Here.
Megan Weaver, Assistant Township Manager.
Here.
Michael Clark, Township Solicitor.
Here.
Nicholas Cross, Township Engineer.
Here.
David Duffy, Chief of Police. Brian Shapiro, Finance Director.
Thank you. Now I have to turn it over to Commissioner Hall.
Good evening. I know it would be surprising to the crowd, but tonight we're recognizing two of our police officers. The first of which is Officer Montana Lighthart for five years of service to the township. Officer Montana Lighthart is currently assigned to the Patrol Division and is also serving as a traffic safety officer and will be assigned to the Traffic Safety Unit as soon as staffing is sufficient. Officer Lighthart is also a Certified Motorcycle Officer, Child Seat Technician, Field Training Officer, and serves as the Department's Fleet Manager. He has received several official accommodations and was nominated by his fellow officers as the 2023 Officer of the Year. Please join me in giving him a hand. And the second officer that we're recognizing this evening is Detective Jonathan Gill for 15 years of service to the township. Detective John Gill was assigned to the Patrol Division until 2022 when he was assigned as a detective. He is a Certified Taser, Firearms, and Bola Wrap Instructor. Detective Gill also serves as a Field Training Officer. He has received several official commendations, won Meritorious Service Medal, and was nominated by his fellow officers as the Officer of the Year in 2013 and 2024. Please join me in giving him a hand as well. Gentlemen, did you want to come up here so we could shake your hand?
Number six on the agenda. Mike, was there any executive session?
Yes, prior to the meeting this evening, the Board held an executive session to discuss a matter of public safety and also to discuss a personnel matter.
Thank you. No one has signed up for public comments. Has anyone come in late that would like public comments? Thank you. Number eight. I'd like to make a motion to approve Consent Items A through D, Staff Reports, Board of Commissioner Minute Meetings, the Final Payment of Clipper and Pipe Services, and a Work Waiver Request. Can I have a second?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Roll call.
Oops, sorry. I'm sorry, you're absolutely right.
President Carter.
Aye.
Vice President Moody.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner McNaney.
Aye.
Commissioner Mall.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Now I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Moody.
Thank you. For item number nine, the township has received several complaints from Upper Gwinnett Township residents regarding the noise caused by brake retarders along South Valley Forge Road. South Valley Forge Road is a state-owned road and maintained roadway, so we requested that PennDOT evaluate this. And they did an evaluation and determined that all of the PennDOT criteria for prohibiting brake retarders were met. And they informed, PennDOT informed the township that we have the approval to prohibit brake retarders along South Valley Forge Road between White's Road and Sumney Town Pike. The township would be responsible for adopting the ordinance, installing and maintaining the signage. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the advertisement of Ordinance 25-0, 2025-01, amending Chapter 185 Vehicles and Traffic at Section 18 to add Article 2 Engine and Brake Retarder Prohibition prohibiting brake retarders on South Valley Forge Road between White's Road and Sumney Town Pike.
We have a motion and a second. Any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. On number 10, the developer WB Homes has completed their land development for 17 town homes located at 1 through 17 Wheatley Walk. The developer has completed this project in accordance with the record plan and applicable agreements to the satisfaction of the township engineer. The developer is requesting that the township take dedication of the sanitary sewer facilities and Sumney Town Pike right of way. The developer will enter an 18-month maintenance period for said public improvements. I'd like to make a motion to conditionally accept the WB Homes and Wheatley Walk's dedication of the sanitary sewer facilities in Sumney Town Pike right of way, subject to the solicitor's final approval.
You have a motion, can I have a second?
So moved.
You have a motion and a second. Any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And then lastly, upon acceptance of this dedication, the developer is also seeking the final escrow release, number six, in the amount of $40,128.97. Our township engineer has certified that the work has been completed and is recommending the release of said funds. I'd like to make a motion to conditionally approve the final escrow release in the amount of $40,128.97, subject to the recording of the deed of dedication.
We have a motion. Can I have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Now I'll turn it over to Commissioner Hall.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the retirement agreement between Officer Number 01, the Upper Gwinnett Township Police Association, and Upper Gwinnett Township.
You have a motion, can I have a second?
So moved.
You have a motion and a second. Any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I'd also like to share one item that I think is a great new program that our fire department is introducing. So the Upper Gwinnett Fire Department has recently been working with a technology partner, name is First Do, and First Do helped them come up with this brand-new program called Community Connect. And this is something that you can join via either their Facebook page or their website. There's a nice little yellow box on their website you can click on, and then there's a link on the Facebook page. And what it is, is this is a completely voluntary program, but it's a way for residents and business owners to share information with first responders that might help them if ever there was an emergency in their home or their business. So for example, let's say you have a family member who's dependent on oxygen, or you have pets, or you have some special needs of any kind. That information, you could, you would start your own account, a profile rather, with Community Connect. And then when any of the first responders, when the ambulance, the fire, the police came to your home, they would have that information. So it's just a great way to communicate ahead of time, all those things you would hope a first responder who's bounding into your house would know before they got there. So check it out.
Commissioner Hall, I believe, if there was a concern from a security perspective, I can't remember exactly what they said, but they have some sort of high-tech security on the website if you had concerns of your information being secure. So I did check that out, and they had information that if you, if you had those concerns, they explained more about that on the website.
Yeah, they aren't going to share that information with anyone. It really is just to help our little local first responders do their job more effectively.
Thank you.
No, that's it.
Now I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Mall.
Thank you, President Carter. Agenda item 13, I'm making a motion to approve the contract for the installation of a third basketball court at Parkside Place by Sourcewell Vendor, top of court, in the amount of $178,710.
We have a motion, can I have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. We have any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Number 14, wastewater. I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of 100 Pomerex sewer manhole castings in the amount of $56,068. Can I have a second?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. We have any board comments? Any public comments? Deanna, can you do a roll call?
President Carter.
Aye.
Vice President Moody.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner McNaney.
Aye.
Commissioner Mall.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Number 16, I mean, excuse me, 15, I'd like to make a motion to approve the installation of 25 cured and placed pipeliners, vacuotise, and sewer pipelining from CoStarz vendor, Mr. Rehab, in the amount of $405,290. I have, can I have a second?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. We have any board comments? Any public comments? Deanna, I have a roll call.
President Carter.
Aye.
Vice President Moody.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner McNaney.
Aye.
Commissioner Mall.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Number 16, I'd like to make a motion to approve the sludge study quote by Barton and
LeJude.
LeJude's Environmental Engineers in the amount of $25,000. Can I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of manhole riser rings from CoStarz vendor LB Water in the amount of $29,471.14. Can I have a second?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any board comments? I have a question, I should have asked earlier. Are all of these under wastewater part of their original budget?
Yes.
Okay, so number 14, 15, and 16, okay. Any public comments? Deanna, can you do a roll call?
President Carter.
Aye.
Vice President Moody.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner McNaney.
Aye.
Commissioner Mall.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Number 18, I'd like to make a motion to approve the aeration tank planning state of quote by CoStarz vendor BSI in the amount of $6,000. Can I have a second?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. We have any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Number 19, I'd like to make a motion to approve the PAC chemical fee automation project quote by CoStarz vendor BSI and additional equipment purchases in the amount of $7,895. Can I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any board comments? Any public comments? Come on up.
Just a quick question. I assume these are capital improvements for the wastewater treatment that have been budgeted.
Yes.
Already, and I think it was mentioned in a meeting earlier that we, there were some capital improvements required at some point. Is this addressing that?
Yes. So all of, actually, let me just take a quick look, but all of the items in the wastewater section are either planning for capital projects or actual capital projects happening right now. And that you're.
Cut on so we could see that.
You're referencing, Carl, I think my budget presentation from last year. So yes, these are all things you heard me talk about in November.
In fact, you can see we budgeted $10,000 for the project, and this is slightly less leaving the residual amount enough to purchase a pump.
I was referring to all of them, but you're talking about the item 19, right?
Yeah, that was the item that you had a public comment. that you had a public comment on, so that's what I was referring to.
It's also part of the wastewater treatments when they came and did their presentation also.
And Carl, in the memos there that are attached to everything, it says in there the impact of the budget. Megan's pointing now. So it's all in there.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
McNaney, that's a great important reminder. For anybody at home or anybody in the audience tonight, when there are items that come up that you may be curious about the budgetary impact or what kind of project it was, click on that link and you'll get some background information and the budgetary impact on it.
And to go along with that, the new finance report that we get lists all kinds of new information as well with our budget and where we are with things.
Thank you, Carl. Other business? I'd like to make a motion to approve the February 2025 open...
Did we finish that motion?
I don't believe we did.
I don't think so. It's okay, you just need to do the vote. You had public comment and you have a first.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Now onto other business. Number 20. I'd like to make a motion to approve the February 2025 open invoices. Can I have a second?
I'll make a second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any board comments? Any public comments? Deanna, can you do a roll call?
President Carter?
Aye.
Vice President Moody?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McNaney?
Aye.
Commissioner Mall?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Number 21. I'd like to make a motion to approve the February 2025 paid invoices. Can I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any board comments? Any public comments? Deanna, can you do a roll call?
President Carter?
Aye.
Vice President Moody?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McNaney?
Aye.
Commissioner Mall?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. And with that, congratulations to the Eagles being the world champions in the Super Bowl Sunday. We are adjourned.